Um, it's something wrong with our white. Like because, like you know, the internet. Yeah, we, they just have the cities locked or something. It's not getting on their.
They should be watching this. Oh, they're really watching this. They want to do this. Yeah, you know, it's a very, very good. Yeah, especially in the middle of the. You see, they're more than that. I don't know how they figure money. They figured out.
But what'd you say? Take it up with your cash?
I think that's cool. I don't know. I don't know. But it's just for money. I think they have it at the turn. I can get it out here, isn't it? I hope you get it first place. I'm excited. Library. Someone switch chairs on me. Yeah. A little tight news.
Oh, this one's really loose.
I'm here. It's a tight. Yeah. Yeah. Come now. I'm the best.
I'm sorry.
Good one. I'm fine. How are you? It was a good party this afternoon. It was. It's a great time to play. And I'm glad we can give a little. I love my train too. I'm ready. I'm sure you have money. We got a rain. I'll borrow my. All right. Everybody ready to go? Get me. My rainy car. This is my music. All right, Pat. We're ready to go when you are.
You folks all got quiet fast. All right, welcome everyone to the August nineteenth, twenty fourteen Shakopee City Council meeting. Item number one, Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Mokel, absent. Councilmember Luce?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tabke?
Here. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Staff has none, Mr. Mayor.
Anything from council? Entertainer motion to approve the agenda? Councilman Lehman?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilor Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four, consent business. Anything to, uh, remove and/or add to consent this evening? I would like to put the, uh, um, item number ten B one, the tobacco sampling ordinance, number eight ninety, the hookah lounges, on to consent. Does anybody have an issue with that? Okay. Um, and before I do that, is there anybody in the audience here to address this item? All right, seeing none, we can toss that on consent. Anything else? Councilman Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Amended is, uh, ten B one added to consent.
Thank you. Mr. McNeil, could you please read the consent of business as amended, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ten A one adopts resolution number seventy-four seventy-five approving the final plat of Valley Park eighteenth edition. Ten B one declares miscellaneous property and bicycles held by the police department to be surplus and authorizes proper sale or disposal. Four C one adopts resolution number seventy-four sixty-four declaring the amount to be assessed, ordering the preparation of proposed assessments and setting a public hearing date of September sixteenth for delinquent garbage and refuse bills for dick sanitation. Uh, further directing a forty-five dollar administrative fee penalty be added to assessment amounts to cover city costs. Four C two authorizes the overhead power lines to be relocated underground from foothill trail to the east flat line of Dakota Highlands, also with spuck's acknowledgement of future undergrounding with country road sixteen improvements. Four E one authorizes appropriate city staff to contract with Dorn Construction, Inc. for the replacement of concrete curbing in the adjacent sidewalk panels at the community center and ice arena and amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Four F one approves of payments of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of three million seven hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Four F two approves amendments of the July first, July fifteenth, and July twenty-second city council meetings. Four F three adopts resolution seventy-four seventy-three approving valley fairs on sale and taxicating liquor license to become in compliance with Minnesota state law. Four F four authorizes purchases of four computer switch servers, excuse me, server switches in the amount of twenty-six thousand four hundred fifty dollars from Dexon Computer. Four F five authorizes Mayor Brad Tabke and Councilman Mike Luce to serve as the city council's designated representatives for future negoti- negotiations regarding railroad issues regarding the establishment of a quiet zone. And four, excuse me, ten B one was added to consent tonight, and that adopts action to, uh, adopt ordinance number eight hundred ninety amending city code section six point two three subdivision ten regarding the sampling of tobacco and tobacco byproducts.
Thank you. Any discussion on those items? One thing I do have to say is that I understand that, uh, the chief had an exciting PowerPoint put together for the ten B one, so if we could please send that out to council so everybody can see it and, uh, make sure that we don't, the exciting changes don't go unnoticed. So, thank you. Um, any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on, item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Uh, this is for anyone who'd like to discuss items that are, thanks for coming, not on our agenda this evening. Um, and we limit it to five minutes apiece. All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on to item six A, consideration of Minnesota Investment Fund application for Rosemount, Inc., resolution number seven four seven four. Entertainer motion to open a public hearing? Councilman Whiting?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Councilman Lehman?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are in a public hearing for the consideration of, uh, Minnesota Investment Fund application for Rosemount. Ms. DiMaggio?
Thank you. I'm Samantha DiMaggio, the economic development coordinator for the city. Thank you for meeting with me this evening. Tonight, I'm here to discuss Rosemount Emerson. Approximately a year ago, Rosemount Emerson purchased the, as we lovingly called it, the ADC one building. They have been in the process of rehabilitating that building, or in probably their mind, they're doing new construction on the building. The building was purchased and it had never been completed. So, last year, they came to us and asked for us to apply for a Minnesota Investment Fund loan on their behalf. How it works out is that as a city, you have the ability to apply for one Minnesota Investment Fund loan per year. The EDA also has that ability. Last year, we asked for the Minnesota Investment Fund for Rosemount Emerson. They were awarded a five hundred thousand dollar forgivable loan that was awarded on August ninth, twenty thirteen. With that, they promised to create a hundred and twenty-five new permanent full-time employees. Phase one consisted of site acquisition and new construction. They spent approximately thirty-three million dollars. And I know how much you love pictures, and I love pictures, so here is a picture of what the site looked like when they first purchased it. They are now asking for phase two, which will be an additional five hundred thousand dollars. The city of Shakopee will ask the Department of Employment and Economic Development to grant that money to us. In turn, we will offer a forgivable loan to Rosemount Emerson. Rosemount Emerson promises to create two hundred new permanent full-time employees. Their phase two, um, construction costs are twenty-six million dollars. They plan on finishing construction on approximately ninety-four thousand square feet of their building, and they plan to add their machinery equipment in hopes of starting production. And here is what their building looks like today. So, tonight, I'm asking you to approve a resolution number seven four seven four, which authorizes the city of Shakopee to apply to the Department of Employment and Economic Development for five hundred thousand dollars. We'll use those funds to offer a forgivable loan to Rosemount Emerson. If Rosemount Emerson does not create the two hundred new permanent full-time jobs within two years, we will ask them to repay back at a prorata share, but hopefully that won't be an issue.
Councilwoman Whiting?
The two hundred permanent full-time positions, those were to be new positions and not moved from Chanhassen?
Yep, so those will be above and beyond. The state of Minnesota is actually requiring that we turn in a list for all the employees that they have in the state of Minnesota. That way, we can make sure that they're not moving people, just relocating jobs from facility to facility. These will be brand-new jobs.
So, that's how that's gonna be checked through the state?
Yep, and so we'll also have a list of that. And then, on an annual basis, while the loan or the forgivable loan is open for the next two years, we'll ask them to turn in a list of jobs to make sure that they're actually creating the jobs that they promised.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilman Lehman?
If the city gets the grant money from the state and then gives it to Emerson, and, uh, they don't create the jobs, then it's prorated, do we then have to pay it back to the state, or how does that work?
Rosemount Emerson would be required to repay it back. We also would put liens on some equipment that they're gonna purchase. Therefore, if they, something happened to the company, we would have first lien on that machinery and equipment. We could sell it to pay the state back.
But we would, we would be on the hook to pay the state back?
We would be.
Okay.
Any further questions? All right, this is a public hearing, so anyone in the audience like to discuss the matter? Angela? No, all right. Uh, seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Councilor Luce, do we have a second?
Second.
Same as Councilman Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, any, uh, well, that's just to close the public hearing, we're not done yet.
Let me come back.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Whiting?
Make a motion, motion to approve resolution seventy-four seventy-four, resolution authorizing and approving the Minnesota Investment Fund application, grant agreement, and forgivable loan in connection with Rosemount, Inc.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Same as Councilor Luce, any discussion? Yes, sir.
One last question. How, why can't, since this is the state doing this, why can't they go directly to the state and bypass the city?
Sure. How this program works in the state of Minnesota is the state makes the cities be the entities who conduct all of the loans or grants that are done. So, the state does not give direct loans with this program. I believe that they do that to ensure that the city is making sure that the business is doing what they're supposed to do. It's very hard for the state to be in the local government to find out if they're creating the jobs, to make sure that the funds are being used for what they're being used for. So, they give the money to the cities, and that's the partnership that they have with the cities is to make sure that the cities ensure that the money is used in the fashion it's supposed to be.
Okay, I heard an earlier answer from Councilwoman Whiting that said the state was gonna make sure they created the jobs, and now I heard that it's the city's obligation to make sure they create the jobs.
The state still does monitor, and they actually report to the legislature. So, on an annual basis, the legislature will give it, get a report saying that, for instance, I think last year, they had twelve million dollars to use for the Minnesota Investment Fund. The legislature will get a report saying how many jobs were created with the, the use of that money, what the average wage was, if they included benefits or didn't include benefits. They'll get a report, and that's how the legislature determines if they wanna continue funding that program or not.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Councilor Luce?
Um, again, I wanna make sure I'm understanding it properly. I, I, I believe what the reason that the state is having the city be the interim person, 'cause we're closer. If we were outstate, the state themselves would have sent somebody out to check on them. This is your job, right?
This is my job, so I will make sure that they do what they're supposed to. For instance, I'm in the process of clo- closing out the first grant that they got. Actually, went out to their facility. I took pictures of the equipment that they put into play. Also, had the state of Minnesota come out, and they looked at it as well. So, in the meantime, they wanna make sure that someone is here ground level, watching to make sure that the project is going forth as it's supposed to.
Councilwoman Whiting?
Just a, a follow-up to clarify. This was part of the original agreement that there was gonna be a phase two part of this program.
I believe that that was part of the original package. There was also some questions about the Job Creation Fund, which was a brand-new program that at the time was not in play. I believe it was maybe two months ago, you actually had authorized that we somewhat participate. Our only participation was that we agreed that we thought they were a good company, they should get the funds. We want them in our community, we wanted to participate with deed. In that case, deed did run that program through themselves, but that's a tax credit program. So, the, in order to get the funds, it will be a rebate on their taxes. It's not like they're getting a check. In this case, they will have to prove to us what the funds were used for, so I'll collect invoices. I'll have paid invoices along with cash checks. I'll go out and I'll make sure that the equipment is there as they said it's supposed to be, or the construction was done. It's very similar to a, a pay-as-you-go, to make sure that they've actually done what they've said they do before they pay you.
All right, anything else? All right, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Me.
Passes three to one with Councilman Lehman in dissent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, item seven, business remove, removed from consent agenda, there's nothing. Uh, recess for Economic Development Authority Meeting, entertain a motion to recess. Item number eight, Councilwoman Whiting?
Make a motion to recess to the Economic Development Authority Meeting?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Same as Councilor Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. President Lehman, you are on.
All right, call the EDA to order for August nineteenth. Should have, uh, agenda in front of you. Basically, it's the agen- the agenda consent of item, meeting minutes, and bill list. Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. And the consent agenda.
All right, motion for approval of the agenda and consent agenda by Mr. Whiting, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Luce. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
We should just add it on adjourning onto that motion.
Yeah. So, there you go. Mr. Tabke made a motion to adjourn, by the way.
I'll second that.
September sixteenth, seven P M. Seconded by Mr. Whiting. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. We reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting, and now I'll take a motion for a five-minute recess. We're gonna move down there for budget workshop. Councilman Lehman?
Motion for a five-minute recess.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Same as Councilor Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are in recess for five minutes to get in place for budget discussions. Uh, Pat, we reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting for item number, uh, ten B, not ten B one. Next page, ten F one, overview of twenty fifteen preliminary property tax levy, debt service levies, and twenty fifteen preliminary bu- budget process. Ms. Linehan?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff members, and members of the public. This is continuing follow-up to the budget process that we do each year that starts about June, goes into December. And just to give you a little overview of what we'll be walking through tonight, there's a number of staff people here, because this is the, uh, portion of the budget where a lot of things have to be coordinated. We need to, council direction, we need to know your priorities. And I'll walk through some background information that we've received from other entities, such as the county, the state, and other staff members. What I'd like to walk through tonight is the most recent information that we have from Scott County relating to, as you see ahead of you here, the different types of property, the class types, the parcel, the what-if analysis on taxes. There's details that I can provide to you on, on current market value just recently received. From the perspective of the information that we'll be discussing tonight, and what we'd like direction on, it'll be in four primary capital areas. Capital improvement. Public Works Director Bruce Looney is here. There are a number of issues relating to the EDA as well as downtown development, which also flow into a capital improvement project. We're gonna be working through some debt service issues that we've recently discussed, but I'd like to get a confirmation as we prepare for a preliminary levy. We'll also be talking about staffing issues that surface each year, uh, in our budget process. One of the things I want to walk through with council is just a, uh, an overview of the schedule. One change that occurred at the legislative session this year is typically, for a number of years, you've had the preliminary levy that had to be made and approved by the city council and then provided to Scott County by September fifteenth. This year, that changed to September thirtieth. So, we have an added timeframe there, because there is information in a number of areas that is simply not out yet. Uh, I was at a meeting today, Department of Revenue, League of Minnesota Cities, and, uh, it was very interesting in the number of areas that we are still waiting for information to come in from. The other area is the process of the, what used to be called the truth in taxation hearing. That requirement has now gone by the wayside. We have what we call the requirement for a public hearing. That will be set as your first meeting in December, and that's where we provide an arena for public content, public discussion regarding the budget, regarding the property tax levies. And that will be coming back to you, but at this point, we plan to have that the first meeting in December. And then, the final budget and levy have to be certified to Scott County by the end of December. So, just to give you an overview of what we're gonna be looking at from a timeframe. Yes, sir.
Do we have the twenty thirteen, uh, parcel counts?
Um, do I know, but I can tell you it's up about four hundred. I can get those for you. I had that in the last packet. Do you, do you remember when we did that quick work session and we talked about that? Uh, Councilmember Lehman, let me pull that up, and I'll route that out to you this, during this week, so that you can see the comparison. I can tell you Shakopee's has grown. Another positive step. Based on that, let me move to the next update from Scott County that we've recently received. And this is the assessment report that provides to you a fourteen and fifteen review. And what this report does, and I'm gonna just move this up and down so it's somewhat readable. If I make it smaller, it's a lot of data. There are different capacities in which value is reviewed. There's the EMV, or estimated market value. There is the net capacity. There is a tax capacity number. And I know this is gonna get confusing as we go through this. We have a residential market value factor, and then we have a total market value. This is at the previous work session, an area that we did review. Again, these are the kind of things that make finance directors, communities, very happy. After years of declining values, you are seeing an increase of market value across, across the line. It's a very positive year. And as, uh, Ms. DiMaggio and I have spoken, this does not reflect what is currently ongoing for your current construction. This is what we were at at one-one. It does not include the activity you're seeing in fourteen yet. That's a really positive growth factor. We actually have this data from every city in Scott County. If council would like, I'd be more than glad to route that out, if that's something you would want to see. It's got rather interesting information. So, would, would that be something you want me to send out this week?
How do we compare it?
We are healthy.
So, just so I'm clear, make sure everyone's clear. This is the change from technically January one, twenty thirteen to January one, twenty fourteen.
That is correct.
Correct?
Right, your two columns are your fourteen, you know, your pay fourteen, your pay fifteen.
Yeah, so, but it's all the first of the previous year.
Exactly.
So, it's a lag from when all that shows up.
Correct. That is correct. One of the discussions that we have each year, and I know this is one that's just a real joy to try and see, so let me try and expand this. As you recall, and for newer council members, this is a work paper each year we get from Scott County called the what-if. The what-if takes last year's tax information. I'm gonna try and blow this up a little, so we'll take this in pieces. It takes the information and applies it to what is oftentimes a very big concern to many elected officials, and that is, how does this impact our residential homeowners? How did, how do changes in values impact what's happening? And if I can just give you a little refreshing from prior years, again, I'm not gonna try and confuse you, but I wanna just kinda move around here a little. Take a look at this column. In years past, you've seen estimated market values that have seen declines. If you look at this year's, I'll pull this up just a little bit more. What's estimated by Scott County is fifty-two percent of your residential parcels will see an increase of fifteen percent or more in value. Another twenty-five percent will see an increase of between ten and fifteen percent. Another fourteen percent will see an increase of five to ten. All in all, ninety-some percent of your residential parcels are going to see increased value. Now, for every opportunity, there's sometimes issues that you have to address. As you recall, when you have an increasing market value, you may see an increase in your taxes. Just because your value goes up, your taxes may go up. So, just, just to make sure we're, we're clear on that. Let's go back up in here to this section. What's provided here is what was, uh, brought through in the current tax year, twenty fourteen. You had a tax capacity, let me blow this up a little bigger to help you see. It's just giving up. Uh, you had a tax capacity of roughly the forty million. We had TIF in this year of about two-hundred-and-fourteen, which gets reduced from this amount. We had fiscal disparities of six million five. You had a net tax capacity of approximately thirty-four million. When you bring this through, the calculations, you had a tax. When you bring this through the calculations, you had a tax rate of about forty-one point four three. If you took the fiscal year twenty fifteen, just kept keeping it flat, you had its net tax capacity went from thirty-four to thirty-eight. That's a pretty substantial, pretty substantial increase. Keeping the other factors flat, we know we've got some fiscal disparity early numbers that have changed. You're looking at with a flat tax levy, a tax rate that declines to thirty-six point eight five. When you bring that level of growth into your value, the levy drops your tax rate substantially. As we refine things throughout this budget process, this is the work paper we're going to be working on. And we will be bringing these pieces back to you for review. But I just wanted to give you the first overview of how valuable growth is in a community as you're discussing tax levies, tax rates, tax values. Okay? I'm going to move on to the next piece. When we talked about those tax rates, there's a couple of areas here I'd like to walk through with you that are important in the discussion. I'm going to bring this down a little.
I'm sorry Julie, can we scoot back to that last one real quick? I just want to make sure everybody's clear on one item.
Certainly.
So that from, if your value were equal from twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen.
If your value stayed flat.
And we kept the levy the same, your taxes would drop from?
Your tax rate would drop from forty-one four four to thirty-six point six five.
And taxes paid would drop on the house, the average house that we're using here from seven hundred and thirty-four dollars for the year, almost over eighty dollars to six fifty-three twenty for the year.
That's exactly right.
So if we kept the, on a apples to apples, year to year, it would drop eighty dollars if we kept the levy the exact same.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Just to clarify too that last year when the values went down substantially, the dollar amount that you paid stayed the same because the levy stayed the same. Even though the rate changed because you needed the same amount of money, top rate.
We actually, we actually took about a four point five percent levy increase.
Yeah, well, and I think what I'm getting at is if you're, you said if your value goes up, typically your taxes go up.
Because you're in a higher, the base that your taxes are calculated on that market value, that increases.
I'd like to continue that if your value goes down, that your taxes go down. That's not the case, is it?
If your value goes down.
Your tax goes down.
It, no, it really all depends upon the market value of the area and what your tax rates come out at.
So you're never guaranteed a property taxes will go down, you're only guaranteed they'll go up.
No, not necessarily.
Even if your value goes down, unless you spend less.
Yeah. No, if your market value increases, you spread your tax base over a broader base.
Yeah, if your, if your market value goes down and the levy stays the same, then your taxes will go down. If the levy stays the same. And we as a council chose for the levy to go up. Is that what you're getting at?
Well, typically what happened last time around when, right after two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when housing collapsed, the values went down substantially, but the dollar amount that was paid stayed the same year to year. So if you took a two hundred thousand dollar house, and this is a hypothetical, let's say they paid five hundred in city taxes or whatever, and the value went down to one fifty, the next year they still paid the same five hundred on a hundred fifty thousand dollar house as they paid one of the two hundred thousand dollar house.
And in order to do that, the city stopped paying debt and stopped doing the infrastructure that it needed to do in order to make that gap up.
Well, at the same time, the city raised a levy.
Okay.
Otherwise, otherwise we will see a decrease.
So in mind, as we talked about, what is the city's tax rate, as we've often discussed in these meetings? There's three components of your property tax bill. There is the city's portion. We have a tax rate of forty-one point four three. Now, what is provided here is a really interesting chart we get from Scott County. That provides us with all the cities in Scott County, the townships. The second component on your property tax statement is the school levy. Now we are again, the majority of Shakopee is in District seven twenty. They have a tax rate of about thirty-six. The final component of the three entities on your property tax bill is Scott County. That's at a rate of about thirty-nine. It's roughly a third, a third, a third in this area when you're looking at Scott County distribution of taxes to city, to county, to school. One of the areas that I had an opportunity to talk about today with the Department of Revenue and with the League of Minnesota Cities gets back to exactly what you were talking about, Councilmember Lehman, and that is the entire issue of when does a property tax decline? There's a really broad effort right now through the Department of Revenue, through other government entities and through the private sector and through cities to encourage homeowners to participate in the property tax refund program. Now, for some of you who've been on the council a while, you remember we used to have a market value exclusion, we used to have a market value homestead credit. I mean, there's just been a lot of state programs. One of the things that the state is really encouraging participation on and is, I get a chance because we just had this meeting today. I'll be working with Mr. McNeil and Ms. Wilson to talk about a really good way for the city to communicate this information to the property taxpayers. Right now, about fifty percent of the state participants who are eligible to receive a property tax refund are doing it. It's been put in place to help lower income or fixed income homeowners benefit from what is often exactly what you're seeing, increasing market value, increasing property tax basis. But it gives a tax relief to property taxpayers in the form of a property tax refund. I'll be following through on some of that also as the details get a little bit more refined. But I just wanted to give you a heads up on a project that as we talk with the community about property taxes and impact. This property tax refund is becoming really big and it's not, it's not as clearly understood as I think it should be. So just a sidebar there. Uh, what we want to talk about tonight goes back to some of the items we introduced here on a previous discussion with the council. And if, what I'd like to start in here with is with the capital improvement fund. One of the pieces that you'll see in the upcoming years is a discussion on how do we fund the infrastructure. Mr. Loney has presented a very detailed capital improvement plan for the upcoming years. We talked fifteen and sixteen particularly. But as you can see, those are very substantial years and in speaking for Mr. Loney, these dollars are not going to go down just because of the age of your infrastructure, the deferral of some of the maintenance that's needed to be done, the expansion and growth you're seeing. One of the pieces that's missing as you look at this capital plan is where we're going to roll into on the whole capital project is as we talk about downtown, as we talk about expansion of a program to bring about the rehabilitation or the improvements or the expansion. None of that is currently included in your capital improvement plan. From the staff perspective and the budget planning mechanism, we'd like to talk to council tonight, what are your priorities on that? Ms. DiMaggio has had a lot of thought and discussion that she'll also be having tomorrow night with the EDAC. We've had previous discussions of where in the goals does this fit? From a council perspective, I would ask that there be some direction provided. What do you want to see in the fifteen and sixteen budgets for downtown? Where is this a priority? Uh, one of the ideas that I've been looking at and looking at a way to fund is, is it feasible to take roughly a five hundred thousand dollar commitment for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen? Use that to fund the project to give you time to get your plan in place, get your projects prioritized, determine what, based on, in review between the Planning Commission, the EDAC, your work with the Public Works Director and other city staff. How do you wish to proceed with this downtown project in the funding priorities of the budget? And any questions of staff? And Sam, if you want to jump in?
Well, I have a question. How are we, specifically downtown projects, that, how are we going to? Who's in charge of that? Is that going, running through the EDA? Is that running through Sam? Is that planning? Is that, where does that project fit in?
Mr. Mayor, I should recall that we had, we had a discussion at the August sixth meeting and talked about a number of different things, EDA when it comes to building renovation or site acquisition, if that's something that you want to do. Uh, but looking at the fact that we really need to go to the next phase of the study that had been done by HKGI. And there's consensus of interest in having them do a study for probably about a hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and fifteen, which would outline then what would need to be done for street scaping improvements and other major investments. I think that's what Julie is talking about in terms of five hundred thousand dollars. If you put that into a fund for the next three years, you'd be able to pay for that. But we also talked about some of the things you gave us some direction on in terms of a high priority for right now, that being specifically the parking lot at Second and Lewis and some alley improvements, which I think is going to be in the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar range for two thousand and fifteen. That one seemed to be one that you wanted to pursue at that point. Question is, are you comfortable in putting together a half million over three years then to do the funding that we suspect will come from the HKGI study to begin as far as improvements in sixteen?
So you're saying a million and a half altogether for twenty seventeen? Is that what you're saying? I'm confused.
The option could be, this is what we've talked about, is we know there's different plans. I know Bruce has looked at different capital aspects. Sam is looking at things that the EDAC is talking about. We're saying start five hundred thousand in twenty fifteen. Focus on get the plan done, get the process going, tackle a few of the projects. With the consideration that in sixteen, will you also need another five hundred thousand? Would be surprising to me if you got a downtown project done for five hundred thousand. But just lay the groundwork to bring this project, if in this area, if this is a priority, bring this through your budget planning.
I guess I thought it was very clear after the last meeting that we were planning in twenty fifteen. And then I thought we were putting two million into the CIP for twenty sixteen for downtown projects.
Well, take a look though at your twenty sixteen CIP. You've already got six million committed.
Okay.
Okay? What we're saying is.
So to eliminate the bump basically, is what you're saying?
You're, you need to define, how much do you want to tackle in a year? How, what years do you want to tackle this? And based on what you're already looking at from the projects, because Bruce has some very defined projects here. These are the priority of the infrastructure CIP. We also need to talk about a downtown CIP if we're going to bring this forward. Where does this fit in your prioritization?
Got it. Councilman Lehman?
All right, the, uh, my understanding was where we're going to try to take care of some of the routine maintenance items. Um, the parking lot, any safety hazards that we might have, maybe some ADA sidewalk cuts or whatever. Um, grates that are pushing up, these types of things. Is that included in twenty fifteen?
That would be in the five hundred thousand that we're saying we want to see put away because there's not been any money in your operational budgets to deal with downtown maintenance.
So Julie, that five hundred thousand would be in addition to the five point nine million.
Well, maintenance typically doesn't go into the CIP. The CIP, as Mr. Loney can explain, is primarily taking these major projects. If you're going to do a downtown repair, maintenance and rehab, that's a whole new set of dollars.
Back up, let's just talk about the parking lot for three hundred thousand, I think it was?
Two fifty.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, that's a recon on the parking lot.
Which is not in this list, am I correct Bruce? The recon for the downtown parking lot is not included in this group, in this group.
I don't see it on the list. Okay. But the question is, are we going to maintain the stuff that we have? And if we are, then we need to put the parking lot on that list. If we can't maintain what we have, then we shouldn't be building anything new. That's my feeling. Okay, and that's kind of where I thought we were going last meeting. And some of these other, any safety issues that might be down there, grates pushing up or whatever.
That was maintenance.
Well, that's a maintenance thing, we need to address it. I mean.
The, the study, the hundred, I think it was hundred and fifty.
That's a hundred, hundred to hundred and fifty?
That's proposed in this five hundred thousand for twenty fifteen?
Yes, if you're going to tackle a study, a parking lot, alleys and those other areas, you'd be looking, Bruce, roughly five hundred thousand by the time you put all these pieces together? Potentially to give you enough coverage?
What we talked about in the last meeting was looking at the Lewis Street parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe a couple of concrete alleys.
But, um, and then wait till we formulate the plan for the streets and, you know, the ADA improvements, the streets, the streetlights. That, that was not included. So the.
But if we know that there's any safety hazards out there, we're going to take care of them as general maintenance.
Tripping hazards, we're going out and fixing right now.
So we're covered there. The alley next to the parking lot, Lewis Street parking lot. If the alley, if the parking lot is going to get tore up, that would be the prime time to do that one alley. And it was my understanding that it's potentially part of that is storm drainage fund to build it so that it captures the water and moves it toward where we want it.
Correct. We have to come up with a concrete alley policy, but that's just a general thought.
Okay. The alley for four twenty in twenty seventeen out of the capital potentially is going to go somewhere else to the, uh, storm fund or not?
Yeah, we were looking at at least probably seventy-five percent of that cost would be storm drainage.
Okay, so is the four twenty twenty-five percent of that total cost or is that just a bookmark for now?
The four twenty was kind of like a, you know, we can do an alley about, a regular city block alley is about fifty thousand to sixty thousand per block.
Okay.
So that's about eight blocks of alley.
Okay, so that's really just a bookmark to hang there.
Yeah, it was just to kind of get the program underway.
Okay.
But, uh, the Lewis Street parking lot and that alley has come to the forefront as a project. I believe council desires to move up.
Okay, and then my last question, Mayor, would be, when we do, uh, road improvement projects around any other business in town, do we assess that project or not? When we did the frontage road by Brambilla's, we assessed that project, did we not?
Frontage road by Brambilla's?
Yep.
When we overlaid it, no. If we reconstruct it, yes.
Okay, if we reconstruct the downtown, will we be assessing any of that project?
Current policy is yes, we would. If it's reconstructed. Now, the streets are in pretty good shape.
We just don't know what we're going to do until we see our plan.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so we really don't know what the cost is going to be. Could be substantial if we reconstruct it and it could be minor tweaks here and there with cutout, curb cutouts and, uh, loading things for patios.
Councilman Lehman?
I think the idea here is to start putting some money away, get this plan rolling and maybe knock off a couple of projects. I think your idea was five hundred thousand dollars a year for the next three, maybe four years. I think that's where we're going with this and I, I think that's what I would support.
That's Louise.
I think we're kind of putting the cart in front of the horse here with that alleyway. We don't have any commitment from the utility company that was talking about digging it up and putting in, uh, honeycomb tubes. Um, they would benefit from us not concreting it. We would benefit from, uh, the standpoint that um, they're going to pay part of it if we wait. So I, until we get a commitment there, I don't think we can do anything with that alley.
Well, let's kind of take it up to a higher level. We're not going to get into the details of all those kinds of things now. I totally get what you're saying, yeah. But is every, excuse me, is everyone comfortable with, um, what Ms. Linehan has talked about, is five hundred thousand at least for this year to get the plan put together, figure out where we're supposed to be and fix what needs to be fixed now? That makes sense to fix?
Well, we've got to fix the park a lot.
Well, let's get the plan.
Got to do the study, so there you've got, uh, two twenty-five, hundred and three, see a four hundred that's spent and empty projects. There you've got two twenty-five, hundred and three, is he at four hundred that's spent in empty projects.
Right. And, and, and I'm not going to say that we should do the parking lot until we know what the rest of the whole project looks like. So once we get the plan done as to what everybody wants to see for that project, because the, the use of the parking lot might change. I mean, it might have some different possibilities through there after we get through a study to see what could or couldn't be done in the area. And maybe there's enough parking in other places that that we could sell and have somebody put businesses there. I don't know what the answers are, but we're not going to know them until.
You're going to need that parking lot.
But we're not going to know them until we get through all the ideas. Cousin Lou. Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah. Just want to kind of summarize this a little bit. I think what's being proposed here is to start putting some money away like Council Whitey said. And if the alley project or the parking lot project isn't quite ready, hasn't the money, just it's in that fund or it's in that, you know, the area that we could use eventually for some improvements. We're projecting, we can probably do that next year. But if things just don't work out for whatever reason, we just don't go ahead with the project. So the money can stay dedicated for downtown improvements.
So as a council.
We're making some projections that we don't know.
Yep. As a council, and, and this also goes back with Ms. DiMaggio. I've put, placed in front of you the meeting memo that she has for tomorrow evening with the EDAC, where she is talking about again, the planning, the infrastructure, well railroad, that's a whole nother topic, and Main Street Chocopee. Ms. DiMaggio, as we are looking at this and working forward for placing money aside as to anything, you needed to also bring forward as far as planning and, and coordination so that if we place the funds, everyone on the council and the staff is aware, where, where are those funds going to be spent?
No, I think that's, you know, the way you have it laid out here is exactly how I'd like to see it. I, I agree that that parking lot has been a thorn in my side and I think I've ragged and I apologize Bruce for ragging on you as much as I have about that parking lot. But I want to make sure that that is the best spot, that we should be spending our money and making sure that we're creating something that we're not a year from now saying, oh, we should have used the parking lot for something else. We didn't, we didn't really think long-term. We just thought short-term and put a band-aid on it. I don't want to put a band-aid on anything. I want to make sure that the things that we're doing now will bring Chocopee into the next ten, twenty, thirty years. So, you know, one thing that we've talked about is, is the park. Is, I think Huber Park is a great example of now I have people worried about, you know, traffic and trying to get across there and how we can do something there. And it's one of those things that we have a beautiful tunnel. And so there's talk about trying to use the tunnel and to beautify it, make it better. And I think all these things go together though, is if there needs to be some type of above-ground crossway or a second underground crossway or whatever it may be, I want to start thinking of those things, planning for them, making sure that we're ready for them instead of having someone say, well, why didn't you do this? Because I wish I knew everything. I don't. I cannot see the future. So I really want to make sure that we bring someone in and they really give us the best advice that they have at the time.
All right. So does anyone have issues or problems with five hundred thousand for the next three years to go into downtown funds?
I do. I, I, how do you tell, we're going to levy five hundred thousand dollars for what? We don't know. Wait for a study to tell us how to spend it. So we're basically levying dollars for something. We don't know what we're doing.
You've got to start with a plan.
Well, let's get a plan.
That's what it's for. All right. Awesome. So Cousin Lou. You're okay with five hundred for three years?
Not totally. I, I want to set some money aside, but I don't know that five is the number.
Well, at least for the first year.
For the preliminary. And what I'm looking at is again, preliminary levy we set, anything can be decreased from the preliminary.
How is that going to affect our levy percentage-wise? It's a very small percentage. Are you talking?
Depends what else we do.
It's, it's roughly for each one percent is about a hundred and fifty thousand levy increase.
So as we go through the process, we're basically putting our, our wish lists and our wants together right now. And then as, then that's for the preliminary levy. So we can't go anywhere above that, but we can reduce it from there. So if the, that, once we pass the preliminary levy and we go to the final levy, in between there, if that number isn't where we want it to be, we can pull that overall number down, but we have to find the places to pull things out. And if this isn't something you're completely comfortable with, after we get to the final number, we can talk about pulling it down. But we can't include it if we don't include it now. So if it's something you wish to have in there in the final, could wish to have in there in the final budget, then we should have it in there now. That's Lamon.
We know we're, we're probably going to spend three fifty for sure. So I would support three fifty the first year for sure. With, with an understanding that we're going to do the study and we're probably going to do a parking lot. At some point where the parking lot's going to need it, I, I, I can't imagine what the downtown would be like without that parking lot there.
There's four hundred thousand dollars right there. And that includes part of the study for the quiet zone. So if we, we're talking about the quiet zone, we're talking about fixing the parking lot. We need to do a study so we know what the plan is. We have to put some money together or this is just all talk that we've been doing for these past months. It's time to, you know, pay for it. If we want to do this, you've got to pay for it.
So you're saying five hundred thousand plus four hundred thousand?
There's a hundred thousand and it's probably going to be more, I think you said a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand for the planning stages of that. The infrastructure, which we don't know because we'll wait for the plan, but it could get done, you know, in twenty fifteen. Thirty-five thousand for the railroad study, twenty-five thousand for Main Street programs. That's, that's the amount we've agreed to pay for that.
And anything that's left over, we'll, we know that we'll still have to do lighting and we'll still have to do brickwork. And it's not like the money will evaporate.
If, if the railroad thing goes through, it's going to be a lot more than that.
And why we wanted to put this memo up is the meeting tomorrow night at six PM will be the EDAC discussing these topics. And if there can be information provided to them on what council's priorities and dollars are, it would be very helpful to them.
So Council or Lou, so you're okay with five? All right. So we have consensus of council, three out of four of us. Is that fair, Matt? Or do you want to be?
That's, that's fair.
For five hundred thousand, you're going to argue with all, the three of us over a hundred thousand dollars? Right?
Nope.
Okay.
Three to, three to one is fine.
I know, but it's great to have you come along every once in a while.
Well, I think we need to really have a discussion on what is our priority here? Are we going to spend five hundred thousand on a no whistle zone if that happens? Or are we going to do the downtown street scape? Or are we going to do, do we really believe that we can do all these things in two years?
You've got a study. Study done to tell us.
Well, you know, I don't care if you have a study or not, with, whether or without a study. The study says you can do whatever you want, whatever your pocketbook feels comfortable with, or you can do nothing. So the bottom line is, do you really think that in two years you're going to spend four, five hundred thousand on a real no whistle zone? A million and a half on a downtown street scape, a couple hundred thousand on a parking lot, a hundred thousand dollars on a study, seventy-five thousand on the Main Street program.
Julie, can you go back to that last, the CIP?
Short period of time without having a substantial impact on grandma.
Matt, the way I look at this is that if we look at the line item for, where's it at? The overlay projects.
Now realizing overlays are not assessed. That's a policy.
So we know that that bubble is there seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. For a long time council didn't put mon, has known that that's coming for a long time and didn't put any money away. So two years we, ago, we started with a half a million. Last year put three quarters of a million. This year we're planning on a million dollars to get that money in place so that we're able to do that without killing the entire budget. Correct?
No. Before that, it was actually assessed a portion of it and then the policy changed to no assessment on overlay. So it's not a hundred percent true statement. But anyway.
Anyway, the way I look at it as that we need to start setting some money aside because we know we're going to do something. This is extremely defined. Do we know exactly what it's going to be seventeen, eighteen, nineteen? We don't know yet exactly what the downtown will be, but we know it's going to be at least five hundred thousand dollars. We put that in for this year. We'll have that started and then next year we won't have to levy as much to get to where we need to be, depending on what that ends up being based on council decisions. So that's my thought on where we're going with that.
I think you've got a lot of wants in three years that you're going to have a hard time paying for.
Well, there's another topic that comes up after this, but this kind of leads it off as we, as we've kind of summarized. Samantha will be bringing this to the EDAC tomorrow. There will be discussion of the fact of what council has, has looked at this evening. I think the single biggest issue that dogs the council right now is there are projects that have been deferred, delayed, discussed, studied and not brought forward. As a council, you're now faced with that decision of what are you going to do in fifteen, sixteen? Along with, as you can see, the work Bruce and his crew have put together as to the extent and level of construction just to keep your infrastructure on task. And Bruce, is there, at this point, do you see any other items that you need to adjust, rearrange? At this point, it's pretty much defined as presented here. There's really nothing.
My best shot.
Yeah. And, and they're usually really accurate. So it's like, there's a, there's a number of factors in here, but is council, is council also looking seriously at that general fund transfer, a million dollars for twenty fifteen? Council good with this? Projects on here okayed? Everybody in agreement that this is a critical need?
And just to be clear, we have a majority of council that has five hundred thousand for twenty fifteen.
Correct.
For downtown projects, including planning and parking lot work as determined in the future, I think is the best way to put that. And then we can also earmark five hundred thousand for sixteen and seventeen at this point. But we obviously don't need to make a decision on that for quite some time.
Correct. Okay.
Fair.
I just have a question. Where does the general fund sit right now?
From the standpoint of the tax levy or the fund cash position or what?
Funds that are there.
It is a healthy fund. It has approximately the state auditor's required amount of cash, which is about forty-eight percent of the, of the actual expenditures for a year in the general fund. It's at about nine point five million.
Good.
Okay.
And is that including the second property tax payment yet or no?
No. We just got the first one in. So yes.
We've got another property tax.
We get those in June and December. Okay. All right. One more follow-up is Samantha is still here and we've talked a bit about what she'll be working with tomorrow. On the projects, you've got the planning, the infrastructure, railroad, quiet zone, Main Street. But then there's also the issue of the improvement slash facade loan program that has been established, is being utilized. As a council, I guess it would be useful and if you, Sam here, if you have questions. I would recommend again continuing funding for this program as you're continuing to work with downtown businesses, as you're seeing more and more needs coming forward. I know there's going to be discussion and process brought forward of how do you amend this program? How do you make it more usable? How can it be more consistent? All the issues that you've grappled with over the past few months. It would be very helpful in this budget process if we can get a, a consistent message from council. How much do you want to fund? How much of a priority is this? Where does, again, this is another general fund transfer. You primarily have two general fund transfers. One goes to the CIP, the million dollars we talked about. The other one goes to the EDA. And since you've had the position of expanding the EDA program, this is a major component of that.
I just wanted to let you know as well that tomorrow night, in the past when we've discussed the commercial exterior improvement program, it was kind of a cheat sheet that said, well, you know, we're going to give fifteen thousand dollars. It's going to be used for this. I actually went through and created a formal policy that you'll be able to adopt. That'll be similar to our tax abatement, tax increment. So right now I am the one who refers to all the state rules and regulations as it pertains to things. But now we'll be able to give it out to businesses so they can see which laws, why we bring certain laws into play and, and how different things come in such as, is it a business subsidy or is it not a business subsidy? There's levels on there that say you can only give out so much loan to value for the value of the building. You can only give out eighty percent. Those are things that I was watching, but not necessarily things that all of you knew that I was looking for. So I wanted to make sure that I put it into a formal policy. So I'll bring that to the EDAC tomorrow night and then hopefully to you next month.
Cousin Whitey.
I want to comment on the commercial exterior improvement program. You know, I think this past weekend, we had a good opportunity to see how successful that program has been with the improvement of the Journeys, into the Journey, is it Journey?
For the Journey.
For the Journey, retail facility downtown. I think it's marvelous, marvelous use of, of that money and just shows that revitalization and how much a little bit of investment on our part and on the business owner part is going to be a great investment for the whole city. So I'm, I'm in favor of keeping this program.
Cousin Lamon.
What did we transfer in twenty fourteen?
We brought in three hundred and thirty thousand dollars and that was for Sam's position. That is for the work that we've done through Springstead, Kennedy and Graven and other professional services. And also the amount that was brought forward to do the improvement loans.
And do we know if the, I guess one of, it's a good program. I don't have a problem with it. But I haven't seen the policy, so I don't know if it's a good policy or not yet. Does the policy have restrictions on dollar amount per parcel?
That was something that we had talked about before and I actually believe I left it out this time because it felt like we had a dollar number and everyone was grappling that we were going over, under, this or that with the dollar number. And I think that should be something that's left up to you. And I think we should ask them, how much are you putting into this project? How much are you asking us for? What are you doing? What are you getting for your money? There was some grappling over, well, they're going to do a roof and they're going to do windows and they're going to do doors and they're going to do this and that. And maybe it's fifteen thousand per project. And I didn't want to get tangled up in all of that. I want them to come to you and to tell you what their intentions are, what they're going to do with the money and let you decide if you think that's a good investment or not.
Okay. Well, my concern is I, I wouldn't want to have three hundred thousand set aside for that and have it used on one program and it's done.
The state actually has a maximum. The most you can give someone is two hundred thousand dollars. So they would actually limit that for us, but you would still only be able to give a certain loan to value. So that say someone has a building value that's worth a hundred thousand dollars when they get done. They wouldn't let you give them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix up a building that isn't worth it in the end.
How much have we used to date so far?
Sure. Just within twenty fourteen, I think it was, I think we're up to almost a hundred thousand.
Because if I can, I'm going to try and blow this up a little. This is again, try and read the fine print.
And we only had a hundred and fifty in the exterior fund, correct?
We did. And actually last year we had tried to set aside some money to do some loans for interior as well. How that's kind of happened is it hasn't really worked out that we, that we've done any for interior. I may be requesting that soon that some of the facade also includes some interior work. But I think that will be something that's up to you at the time as well to determine if the work that's done on the inside will also bring benefit to the value. So one of the things that might come up in the future would be potentially a sprinkler system. If somebody came to you and said, you know, the city of Chocopee regulates that I put in a sprinkler system. I have a historic building. The cost of doing that costs extra. Is that something that you would also consider if I'm doing work to the exterior as well?
And as, as you can see on here, just to give you an idea of what's been paid in the recent periods, we actually had a very small payment to Valley Sports. There was a larger payment to Bill's Togary Eagles Club or some very minimal work they did on a facade. There was the, how do you say the last name?
It was Matthew at PGT, I think is what it's called.
Yeah, PGT. And then the Journey Holdings. Those are what have been paid out. That is what has been submitted to the city because as the program evolves, you'll notice we don't just hand the cash to a recipient upfront. That is a pay-as-you-go kind of program. You provide us with proof of what you've done. That gets approved, then you receive payment. That's how that program works.
So Julie, just clarify, this eighty-five thousand and change that's remaining from the previous year. And then we had one hundred and fifty thousand that we really didn't expend. So there's two hundred and thirty-five thousand available if you want to add more to that. The other thing to consider and I, this is probably something that I know EDAC needs to examine and get back to you, but you're going to, based on your consensus at the August sixth meeting, probably get more involved with property acquisition if there's things available. There's a parcel in the downtown to the west here that would be notified by the county is available to us if we want to get into that. Questions, how do you fund that? This might be a source of funding for that if you want to do that, but.
Storm sewer fund.
What?
Said storm sewer fund.
We can talk about lots of.
Did you see Bruce's eyes rolled to the back of his head?
But I mean, there are unlimited virtual number of things that you can do that you just, you have to prioritize. Let us know how you want to implement a plan.
Does, does Sam's wages, did I hear that they came out here last year?
They come out of the EDA fund, the two one nine zero. Now there's funding that's been put aside, eighty thousand to cover her salary benefits and other programs. That's above this.
So that's not included in this?
Correct.
But in the three hundred thousand.
Yeah. The transfer from the general fund. It's part of the general fund levy.
It is included in the three hundred?
Mm-hmm. In the three hundred. Right.
And I think, I think that I have some on here that aren't, haven't been brought into play yet. Because I know there was some new wind.
I know there was some new windows for the giant wash and so those have not been put on here yet because they haven't turned in their bills yet.
Right.
So that isn't quite what we have, but it's close, I would say.
Right, this is what's actually been submitted and actually paid out. Now, the one piece we need to follow up on is making sure, are there groups that need to submit? Let's get those in, let's keep this rolling, we'll go from that.
We could cut it by two hundred thousand if we have Samantha work for free.
If we had what?
Council loses.
That's two tonight, I'm sitting right here.
I think this facade program's great, but I think we need to nail down the ratio of time to forgiveness on these loans. We're all over the board on every one of these. You know, we, we've got them, uh, getting three thousand a year, five thousand a year, six thousand a year. We need to get a set amount and then they need to be held accountable. I mean, one of them, uh, we've talked about is twenty years out for forgiveness. But they're getting five thousand a year. You know, that, that's a ratio that I could live with. I'd like to see it a little lower than that, but as far as the amount of getting forgiven.
It appears the maximum you can ever go out is twenty years. So I'm bringing it to the EDAC tomorrow night in hopes that they can come up with some type of numbers. So for every, like you said, for every five thousand dollars you get, it's so many years of forgiveness or whatever. But as I said, I don't necessarily know that you wanna put a minimum or a maximum number on there because it felt like every time we did that, then we were, you know, I think one giant project that we all have sitting in the back of the room is the pet store. And so I know it's been discussed before. How much somebody's gonna ask for, for that building, I'm not sure. I'm, you know, you just, you never know what's gonna happen. So that's why I hate to have you put a number on there and then not stick with it.
I would, I would strongly support a maximum and they should be thankful and lucky that they're getting anything.
So you wanna have something other than the regulated two hundred thousand maximum that the state's put into play?
All right, we're gonna pull out of this discussion for another day.
Yep.
Next thing.
So tomorrow night, EDA discussion, I believe we have the direction from the council on where they wanna go? Thank you. Okay, the next topic goes into the capital portion of how items have been funded historically in the past. And this just gets into our, our debt service discussion, just to make sure we can get a little history here. City is not carrying significant debt. In fact, for a city of your size, you have very manageable debt. What I wanted to review with you is, there was a historical cycle that the city would fund the construction improvements, the infrastructure improvements, issuing debt every two years. That was back in a cycle when you assessed for overlays and assessed for reconstruct. You don't over, you don't assess overlays anymore, you only assess reconstructs. The piece that we've been working toward in the past couple of years is determining how to pay down the debt, moving debt service into the levy while not taking the entire load of debt in a one-year cycle. So just to remind you, when we first started this about three years ago, we were dealing with the debt service on the fire building. That's a voter-approved referendum. This year, you levied two hundred and seventy-five thousand of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar annual amount. For 2015 levy, I'm recommending, write this one in, two hundred, two hundred thousand, which means that we will carry forty-nine thousand out of the cash balance. Last year, you took a debt service levy for two thousand six A, that was the first year. We plan to bring that forward. The next recommendation I'm making for two thousand fifteen, bring forward the two thousand seven B debt for ninety-two, which means you would add approximately twenty-five thousand from this levy, plus the ninety-two thousand to this levy for approximately an increase of about two hundred and fifteen thousand to your levy. I'm sorry, hundred and fifteen, it's been a long day. Hundred and fifteen thousand to your debt service levy. Now, so far, the city has been able to fund the infrastructure that Mr. Lonie has brought forward because there's been a significant amount of agreements relating to working with SPUC, working with the state, working with the county, working through the projects that we've had a lot of cost sharing. We haven't had to go out for a debt issuance for any of the projects in a number of years. The benefit to that is, right now, debt issuance is very expensive. Uh, you've got the issuance of the debt related to official statement development, bond ratings, uh, legal costs, they're, they're very costly. So if we can avoid debt issuance because of the new requirements, I'd like to continue that. So what I'm confirming with council tonight is the three levies we'll be bringing forward to council. That's two hundred thousand for the building, that's the fire department building. The three hundred and forty-three thousand for two thousand six A, carrying on what we did last year and adding the ninety-two thousand for the two thousand seven levy. And those are what I'll be putting in the preliminary levy. Then the positive note on your debt services, go up to this line here. You can see your debt maturity, it's falling off. You've got some that are falling off here. The one longest debt you have is this public works building. That's a debt that will go to twenty twenty-five. But, as a reminder, this debt service payment each year is made through the building rent, internal service charges that go against the different departments. That is, that debt service is paid through an internal payment. And if council is in approval, we'll move forward with that.
Cousin Lamon.
Can you, uh, go back and tell us how these debts that weren't moved over to the general levy were paid in the past?
Uh, through cash position. There were payments that were made when early assessments were made. If there was significant interest earnings, back in the days of interest earnings, uh, there were fund positions that were maintained. Those dollar amounts are getting less and less, which is why we are pushing such an emphasis on, let's make sure we have coverage. Uh, like I said, the two I'm, I'm especially concerned about are this two thousand six A and two thousand seven B. Those are the two debt service ones that have the least amount of assessment coverage. Council consensus, okay, if we move forward with that in the preliminary levy?
Any concerns with that plan?
No concerns.
Okay, Bruce, you're covered. Thank you, that's, that's very helpful to get that direction.
The past would pay it with excess, uh, budget surplus.
Yes, so there were debt service.
Budget surplus and shift it over to the capital.
Right, uh, pad your budget and pay it.
And right now, what we're doing with a lot of that excess is it's rolling into the CIP to help Bruce and his crew keep the infrastructure in place. You've done a lot of building, a lot of construction. Now you gotta maintain it. Bruce, any final words on that? Okay, I will turn this portion over to Chris relating to the staffing request. Would you like the red gizmo?
Mm, possibly.
Just remember that the folks at home can't see the red pointer up on the, uh, screen.
Alrighty. Alrighty.
Mister Mayor and council members, I have the privilege of discussing with you the major items related to personnel costs in the 2015 budget. Um, the city's personnel costs are a significant portion of our general fund expenditure. I have up here sixty percent, it's actually just a smidge over that, about sixty-one point three percent of our general fund budget goes to wages and benefits. In dollar amounts, that's, and in 2014, that's thirteen point four million dollars that the city spends on wages and benefits. Uh, tonight, I wanna talk to you about the major categories where we spend that. Um, one is new position requests for 2015. The second is an overview of our policies and approach to wages for 2015. And then we have some pension costs that you need to be aware of and I'll give you my best crystal ball prediction on our health insurance costs as well. New position requests, there are requests for four new full-time staff positions in 2015 as well as a request to upgrade and make full-time a fifth position. First is a victim and community services coordinator. This would be a civilian position within the police department. The second is an assistant fire chief in the fire department, obviously, with an emphasis on training needs of the department. That is a conversion of a paid-on-call position into a full-time city position due to the, um, significant workload demands that we are placing on a very part-time person currently and the critical nature of the work that needs to be done there. The third request is for an additional IT person. The city currently provides IT services with two full-time staff people and the assistance of a third staff person that's got good technical skills, but is not officially in our IT department. So we become increasingly dependent upon software and tablets and mobile accessibility to things. Um, we just can't keep up with the workload with only two fully devoted people. The fourth request is for a position in the finance slash city clerk's office, again, related to workload needs of that department. And then the fifth position, as I mentioned, is not entirely a new position, but taking the twenty-nine hour a week, uh, management intern that we have currently and making that a management analyst full-time with benefits. Um, the costs of these positions, you can see here, these are full-year costs. Generally, we, and I would expect that we would, before the final budget is adopted, we generally go through and put a order on these positions where we aim to hire some of them by February first and others by March first and April first and June first and so on. Um, so the 2015 budget would not see that full cost, but in the interest of being transparent and upfront, we show you what the full cost was if we had new people ready to go January second for all of these positions.
What is the current pay? Or what are we putting into the, uh, management analyst and the, the cost of the training chief now? So that'll come out of that, because we already have that.
It will, I believe in the attachments to my memo, um, you hopefully should have, um, received some of that. The, what we're putting into the paid-on-call assistant chief is very minimal. I'm gonna say off the top of my head in the neighborhood of about six thousand dollars. What we're putting into the management intern currently is in the thirties. So by making them full-time, increasing the pay grade and adding benefits, you're slightly more than doubling the cost of that position. So, in your packet was the staff request from the department head for each of these respective positions, which goes into the, you know, what is foreseen as duties for these positions, the, and the assignments, the reason, logic behind the requests. If you have questions about any of those, I feel I'm relatively well-versed in what the departments are requesting. Most of the department heads, um, are in the room tonight as well if the council desires to get into any of those details about these positions and why they're being requested.
Cousin Lamon.
Well, let's go down the list. Victim community service coordinator position. It says in here that it's a state statute requirement that we provide this service. So my question is, does Scott County provide it and can we collaborate with them on it since we're both loca- located in the same city? State statute would have to apply to the sheriff's department too, I would imagine.
Mister Mayor, members of council, the, the state statute requirements are met by current staff. Uh, to some extent, some are met through the, um, county attorney's office during the prosecution of, uh, of those cases. Uh, again, that's part of a long list I provided in terms of the different duties and assignments that this individual would have. Uh, I do believe we're falling short on our, uh, what I would, I would say obligations to our victims, uh, in the city. And I think we can do a lot better job from an outreach and, and collaborating with, and there would be some collaboration, obviously, with, with county services, but, uh, this would be something I would specifically want in-house, um, especially given all the other duties that this person would have.
Cousin Lamon.
Chief, currently, uh, how is this handled? And what is the reasoning why you want it as a, uh, non-sworn?
Currently, it's, it's handled on a, I guess, most of these on a priority basis. And your bigger cases are gonna get more attention and more work with the victims. There's a lot of people that we're just flat-out not talking to and we're closing cases and not even notifying them. I think that's wrong, I think that we have to do a better job of that. Um, we have not, we have added one additional person in the police department since two thousand seven. So part of this is catching up. The answer to the second part of your question, to be very blunt, uh, civilian can do this a lot cheaper than a sworn officer can. Considerably cheaper. And a lot of the things that I've outlined in the memo in terms of, um, tasks that they would be doing are things that, um, a civilian would probably want to do a lot more than a police officer would want to do.
If I may continue, uh, the, I like, uh, the idea of the customer service aspect. Um, uh, I've had a couple times where I've had to, um, call the police. They fill out a report, they give you a business card with the case file on it. And as far as the victim goes in, in the situation, you don't know. Sometimes you don't hear back, uh, uh, and I'm just saying that bluntly. It goes into wherever it goes, you guys do your detective work, whatever you have to do. I like the idea that someone's getting informed saying whatever's happening. To push back just a little bit here, um, would that be a detective that would do that or a captain? Or does the police officer typically, if they have more information, call back? Or is it just not, not part of the timeframe?
It would typically be a detective that would, uh, do the follow-up. Sometimes an officer will follow up, but typically it's a detective, um, following up. And, you know, a lot of other cities, you'll get a nice form letter that explains that your case has been closed and if you have any questions. I think it's more important to contact those people individually. What did we miss? Do you have any other questions? Uh, you are entitled, you know, if we do catch a suspect, for example, uh, and there's an arrest made, the county does a pretty good job of, of coordinating, um, any damage, uh, replacement of damage and, and payment back to the victim. But right now, again, it, it's, uh, it's kind of a case-by-case and a priority. Uh, and our detectives right now probably have twenty cases apiece on their, on their plate.
I, I do see the value in building that relationship with the community as we've seen over the past week or so, that, uh, those relationships can be strained and, um, I like the idea of, of having closure for some of these issues.
Any further questions on this position? All right.
Next one.
Go for it.
Thanks for the, uh, info, chief. Um, assistant fire chief slash training chief, is that what it was?
Mm-hmm.
Is this a daytime or nighttime position?
It's a salaried position. They would primarily work a traditional Monday through Friday, forty-hour week, but there would certainly be, um, evening attendance at training events for the paid-on-call staff um, and other duties required, just like of all of our salaried employees.
Cause there's really nobody to train during the day.
It's, I don't think that that's necessarily true. We certainly have, um, firefighters that are only getting the very minimum training that's absolutely required. And if we could provide, right now, it's provided on Monday evening at six PM and you're either there and you get the training or you don't get the training. We could get a much better coverage of the department and much more in-depth training if we could offer it Monday evening and Tuesday morning, let's say. Or, you know, makeup sessions and things like that. Right now, we just don't have the manpower, um, to do that, so.
I'm really surprised that scale doesn't have somebody out at the training center out there to provide this service to various members of that facility.
The training is very, you know, specific to our standard operating procedures. This level of training, we do jointly train at the scale facility for our new hires to give them all that baseline. So our new hires go through their new hire training with Prior Lake and Savage and Jordan, et cetera. Um, this is the ongoing training that's specific to our department, our apparatus, our equipment. Um, it's also an extensive amount of record-keeping that goes into making sure that we have got everybody up to date on their certifications and things. And it's also having our department maintain that continual knowledge of what the latest recommendations and best practices are in the industry.
I would say there'd be a lot of preparation in the scenarios too that would have to take place in, uh, planning the next event and, or the trip to scale and.
Certainly.
Having all that set up too, so I, yeah. Having all that set up too, so I, yeah.
Myself, I have a big problem with this one. I don't know, we just added four full-time for this year. And I'm extremely concerned about adding another full-time. Is, why can't this be handled by one of the four full-times that we just added? Why couldn't one of those four act in this position?
You would certainly have to change the pay grade if you were going to go to that approach.
That's fine.
And I can assure you that the four of them are very busy with the tasks that they have. We need four in that truck going to calls. And if you're going to pull the person that you've just obligated to set up training and conduct training and prepare for it and do the record-keeping, every time the pager goes off, they're gonna get up, you know, and go to those calls. I don't think you're gonna see great strides or advances on the training front with all of those interruptions and things. This position will backfill to some extent and assist with those calls when we have a working fire or a significant incident, when we have somebody from the daytime crew that's out sick or on vacation or whatever. This gives us another person to make sure we're running, you know, trucks and arriving on scene with the required number of responders. So it supplements that. I don't think that it's a swap, which is why we didn't put the training duties into the duties of the four full-timers in the first place. So, that'd be my response to it, you know, Chief Coleman can certainly give you more detail.
We can bring this back to the September second meeting. A continued discussion.
Well, does anybody else have problems with this one?
I'm not in favor at this point.
I've got a question. Last week, I stopped up at the fire department and the four, scratch that. The three full-time on-call were there. We were missing the fourth. They were in training. And I thought we had to have four by mandate, state mandate or something?
It's not a state mandate, it's a...
It's our SOP.
It's our state.
It's best practice. So that you're...
Is that why they would call someone else in to be the fourth? Obviously, it's not gonna be as fast as adding all four of them there, but sometimes you have to do that.
Well, I've been hearing some negative feedback about the four, and I'd like to get some more information on that when the chief is available to comment on it.
All right, we'll talk about that one again.
Okay.
Administration IT.
IT. You're on, Councilman Lehman.
Currently, we have two?
Yes, sir.
And this is to make a whole-new position or change somebody from part-time to full-time?
It's a whole-new full-time, the addition of a third full-time person.
Okay, so do we know what the total budget amount is for the full department per year? If I take the eighty-five and multiply it by three, then it's...
The IT department is funded in two different forms. The wages and benefits and personnel costs for our IT staff are handled in the administration department's general fund budget. Our purchase of computers, printers, servers, switches, et cetera, is handled by the IT internal service fund. And, and then we collect basically what amounts to a per-head charge from each of our departments. You know, so, and they pay into that. That's our revenue into that fund, and then we use it to buy our software, our hardware, et cetera.
Okay, so the three full-time, if we had three full-time with benefits, we're looking at about three hundred thousand in wages and benefits?
A little bit less than that. Our current IT department costs for benefit, wages, benefits and training is about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. So this would propose to add the neighborhood of seventy-seven, close to eighty thousand dollars additional to that.
So, two seventy.
Yes.
That's Whitey.
Our current IT staff handles the PD, any fire department issues, the whole city.
Seven departments, a hundred and fifty-five network accounts.
As we get more into, you know, like our website goes down, our Agenda Quick goes down, I...
Where I was going was if it's two hundred and seventy thousand with this position, three hundred thousand, just round it. And as we add more and grow more, what's it cost to contract this service out per year? I don't know what that cost is. That's probably more up your alley.
I, I was gonna ask the exact same question. Is at what point do we switch over? And like tonight on consent, we had the switches and stuff like that. At what point do we get out of that business?
I think we don't. Small cities get in that business and you get out as you get bigger. You don't go in as you get bigger. We need people on-site, immediate, you know, doing just the city of Shakopee. We don't need to be in a queue for some professional services division that they'll get to us when they... We also have significant police data that's, you know, very confidential. We do extensive background checks for our IT staff. That day-to-day knowledge that the person that came and touched the squad car MDT yesterday is now touching it tomorrow or the next week and knows what's already been done. We do, I mean, the two people we have rely on software as a service in a variety of departments where they're maintaining connections and firewall issues to the parks and rec registration software, to the finance department and the payroll software that are purchased through Logis. We use professional services for a variety of our needs in the IT division where we, with two people, don't have the in-house expertise for that. But I would argue strongly that taking away our in-house staff and moving more fully to outsourced would be a step in the wrong direction for our organization.
Well, my question, to continue on that, sorry, Jay, but, so like, we absolutely need to have people with exactly what you said for every time staff touches software and hardware and things like that. We need to have people on staff to help with those kinds of things. Or somehow, that way, we need to have people to assist and serve and customer service side of things there. But I wanna push back a little bit with what you said on the, on the hardware side of it, where we store all the personnel data and all those kinds of things. I think a good case could be made that it would be much safer to have it outside of the city.
And it is. The finance department software is not housed here. The payroll software is not housed here. Our park and rec registration software, those are all run by specific companies and we pay software as a service, a fee for those every year, which is not cheap, I should note. You know, our payroll software alone, if you look at the personnel budget, is roughly thirty-three thousand dollars per year, every single year, for our payroll software. That's not just the software, but our portion of the servers that it sits on and the professionals that maintain those servers and secure those servers. Our police department software, records management system, is maintained by the county and provided to all police and fire departments, dispatch, the jail. And we're in the, getting ready to transition to an entirely new product on that end. So, the only major applications that we host and maintain here in-house would be our GIS and our Laserfish. Those would be the two biggies that we have to keep the servers up and running. We have to manage the storage and foresee when we need additional storage and so forth. The other major applications are all hosted, secured, updated externally. We also don't employ a single programmer or coder on our staff. We don't do any custom creation for the city of Shakopee. We use out-of-the-box products because with a two-person IT staff, we just don't have, you know...
So, just so I understand, so why do we need to have our own servers and everything for GIS and Laserfish?
It's a good question. I wasn't involved in the original purchase of Laserfish. That's not something I'm aware of, cities hosting externally. Can you think of any that you know that have their Laserfish outside?
Some of ours is at the county, isn't it?
The coordination with Laserfish is, right now, it requires the work between Crabtree and it also requires coordination with a couple other firms. A lot of what we do with Laserfish also ties in with Logis. So, as you'll get into the next position down there, the finance clerk position, one of the things that we're currently working on between Crabtree, between Laserfish and Logis, is a better coordination of, are we utilizing these services to the best of our ability? Are we getting the most bang for our buck on this? And how do we ensure with all of the records we keep that we're doing it in the most coordinated fashion? Why is it off? Because none of us were here when it was started. It was just put in place that way. And we're just kind of working through the system that's in place rather than starting over.
All right, thank you, yeah. Because my main reason for asking those questions is that I would like to get out of any business or acts or services that we don't have to do as a city. And I've always been under the impression that housing our own servers and those kinds of things are not something that we, used to be that we had to do it as a city. I mean, it used to be that was the only place to do it, but that industry has changed significantly. And if there are opportunities to pull that out of a core city function so we can focus on the things that we're really good at, I would love to get rid of as many of those auxiliary things that we can and give it to the people who focus on that niche as opposed to having us be, you know, many, many different things all at the same time.
I understand that, and I would make the argument that we are doing that significantly and that the fact that we only have a two-person IT staff is a reflection on how much of that is currently maintained by other people and secured by other people and so forth. I really don't think, and I get a sales call a week from an IT professional services firm, you know, that wants, you know, to come in and be our, our IT staff. I feel passionately that our customers, which are our line departments, will not get the service that they are accustomed to and that they need to maintain their daily operations if we move the things we're currently doing in-house outside.
Okay.
Some of these folks are pretty, pretty efficient at what they do.
Well, I just wanna travel down the same road Councilmember Lehman went with the fire training chief and talk about, is this position something that's been discussed at some of the services groups for SCALE? And if this could be shared on a broader scale with county, school, other cities? Is that anything that's ever been talked about?
It has been talked about. I'm not quite sure what their current philosophy on this is, but for a while, Scott County saw an opportunity and floated the idea through SCALE of what if just the county has an IT department and we treat each city basically as another department of the county? And I believe fairly shortly after they floated that idea, the city of Prior Lake took them up on it. And I haven't checked in with them real recently. I have no reason to believe they aren't still in that relationship where Scott County is the IT department for the city of Prior Lake.
Well, the reason I say that is we have this fiber-optic ring that could tie everything together and may kinda go with your, you know, more your hosting kinda, server kinda ideas. I'm just not sure, and I'm sure somebody else has talked about it. Is that the road we wanna travel down or look at?
I think it would be great to at least look at it.
It's hard to say because you don't know what all these other things cost comparable to what we're doing. So we need to know that information.
Right. It's not gonna happen, in my opinion, for the 2015 budget, but we should at least look at it and put it on our list of things to look at as to what, what it would cost and what benefit or, and not just with IT, but with, Bruce is gonna throw a shoe at me, but our mowing crew and things like that.
Custodial?
Custodial, yes, exactly. What, what it takes for, I mean, those things that were not in our core competencies of serving our residents and businesses, what we can get out of and let other people do.
We certainly do that in some models. I mean, we don't have a city attorney on staff. We use a firm that has a range of experts in a wide variety of areas and that really, in my opinion, you know, works for us. We outsource, you know, restroom cleaning and things in public works because we found that it can be done, you know, faster and cheaper, you know, by other folks.
Right. But it also takes getting to the really hard decisions of, we have employees that do those kinds of things. And at least myself, as a council member, I'm willing to look at those things to see where it makes sense. It may not be easy, but...
To push back on my own idea, I don't know. We want to be in the queue either, saying, yeah, we, we'll get to you, you know.
I think that's a significant problem. You know, our, each of our individual departments right now wait in line with our other city departments. And do we wanna be in an even, even bigger group? Councilmember...
Along those lines, you know, is there some way that we could adapt both scenarios? We keep the two that we have for immediate needs and then we have a backup with a firm that could supply us with people?
Until we work through this and find out what are all our options are.
I mean, we have that now. For example, one of our two IT positions is vacant right now because we had a resignation and we're in the recruitment and hiring process to fill that, that second position. And we've increased our, you know, dependency on professional services during this interim period. So we do that on kind of a needs-analysis basis. I guess I'm just a firm believer that there are some things you can't farm out if you want the same level of customer service. And our customers...
That's what I'm getting at with keeping the two that we have for the police department. They would only touch their stuff. We wouldn't have an outside firm deal with that. But in a major emergency, I shouldn't say a major emergency, but where we were getting backlog, we could bring someone in on a temporary issue and then, you know, a week or whatever to catch up. And then...
All right, so just to...
I, I think it was your understands, and I think we understand it. Where you wanna go, but for 2015, you know, our recommendation strongly is that we need to add this position just to maintain what we've got.
Does anyone have a issue with this position being in the preliminary budget?
Well, he might be adding it and then taking it away right away.
That's what preliminary is, yeah.
That's what the word means.
All right, we don't... Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay, we're good with this one. Thank you, Chris. Finance clerk position. Matt, did you have any issues with this one?
I'm back to the same as I asked about the IT one. How much are we spending on finance and at what point is it better off to farm the whole thing out? ADP doing payroll and these types of things?
Go for it, okay. Just to kinda give you an overview on what this position specifically is. Could you farm out finance? That would require you to bring in an audit firm. Some cities have done this where they've removed their finance people. They bring in an audit firm who deals with just the oversight of what occurs there. You also have, we don't have utility billing here, so that's not a part of this. Payroll is under administration. So what you're dealing with is receipting, you're dealing with your accounts payable, you're dealing with all of your audit trails, your grants. You're working through, in the clerk's area, records retention. I mean, it's just a whole gamut of items. There are some things you cannot just put out. You're not gonna farm out elections. You're not gonna farm out daily deposits. You're not gonna farm out, there's just a lot of the tasks that just simply cannot be farmed out.
Why couldn't elections be? Why couldn't elections be?
We could try. I think Scott County just rolled that on us, is what I'm saying. Huh? There isn't, there are just some, there are some arenas that there are no one to do.
Right, I'm just curious.
Senior Center. There, there are whole areas of this that you simply can't farm out. It's kind of like, as Bruce knows, you get into certain areas of public works, there's anybody to do certain areas.
Most large companies have ADP and do their payroll.
Right. Oh, but payroll's in administration, that's not in this arena. So, and I have to say, I was the one who created that form that you were all looking at on that and I ran out of room about three sentences into it, so that's my flaw. One of the areas that I've spoken with Chris and Mark in great detail on is, there's an arena here that is growing, like you've seen in a lot of areas of your city. A lot of it relates back to EDA, a lot of it relates back to your TIF, your tax abatement, your grants, your deed funds, your file maintenance, all the work that's now coming in when you're seeing business growth, residential growth, the type of things that you're working to expand. I would be remiss if I was telling you right now I feel we're managing that well. We are, we are doing minimal overview. This is going to be something I really wanna focus this position on. Recently, you've seen the election process that's come through in the preliminary election. The general election, a lot of that work has now flowed from Scott County down to here. The other piece of this is we are changing our process of how we train judges, who we recruit, how do we meet state compliance. Mark Ritchie has made major changes at the Secretary of State's office. We really want to make sure that we run a wonderful election that makes people feel good, they get in, they get out, and they have total faith in the system. We need to really focus on that. Another area that we're looking at is the whole area of compliance with records retention, issues related to data security... issues related to data security of records, the processes of developing policies related to our records. Right now, those are just floating on the top. It's not being handled in the manner that I feel is at the best it could be. I need a position that will help us attend to these growing needs. And I wanna maintain compliance and I don't, like I said, my standard line is I never wanna see this city above the fold and the headline.
Thank you for that, anyone have issues with this position?
Yeah, I'll just add that when we combined the clerk's office with the finance department and shrunk it down and saved money and they said this is the greatest thing we're doing now we're back here paying a price now for it, so maybe it wasn't such a good idea at the time.
Well, I think we're looking, I mean, we're looking for ways to consolidate and make the best use of the skilled positions that we had at the time. And I think one of the things that we found is that because, for example, with the elections, Scott County is backing off that and that's sort of coming down to us and Julie and her staff did a fabulous job with that, but they were doing training in the thick of it, that's time consuming. Uh, just doing the testing, many things also relating to elections was significant, so um we're still a growing city, it doesn't, doesn't mean that we're gonna be able to produce in a lot of areas.
As well, we're doing a lot more with audit compliance than we ever had before.
Fraud detection standards are massive.
And as well with our codification and all that fun stuff.
Fraud detection standards, it, it just keeps growing and every time I think I've gotten all the standards.
All right, I think that we're, uh, consensus is we're okay with this position.
Okay.
Is that accurate? Okay, and then full-time management analyst, uh, taking up what we uh started with last year and then moving that to full-time, council meeting?
Just a quick comment, uh, you know, we, this is a part-time or a little more than what'd you call it, two-thirds or three-quarter?
Three.
Three-quarter time, um, and we've seen that it's done a great job with some of the issues with trash hauler management, uh, with that whole changeover uh process at least internally and I think that I just hate having somebody sitting at three-quarter hour time when we, he's done such a good job.
Any issues with this one? All right, consensus is that we're good there too, thank you.
Alrighty, now the, those are the new position requests, the other topics I wanna talk to you about briefly are wages. Um, as you may all recall or may have forgotten by now, the city has three unions that represent a little less than half of our full-time workforce. We have settled contracts with all three of those groups for twenty fifteen and for twenty sixteen. Those groups by contract will be receiving a three percent general wage increase January first of twenty fifteen. Moving on to non-union, our full-time non-union staff, this is the other fifty, fifty-five percent of our full-time staff. Um, what Ms. Linehan is working into the budget is a three percent wage increase for those individuals as, as well. Um, as long as budget and tax base allow, it has always been the city's policy and goal to treat our union and non-union employees um equitably, so that's where we're settled with the union, um, we budget and carry that over to the non-union. Part-time, temporary and seasonal, the city employs um a number of part-time, temporary and seasonals. We're at our peak right now during the summer months when park and rec programs are operating and sand venture. Aquatic Park is up and running and um in the public works department, more outdoor work um needing to be done in the summer. That pay plan, we do not generally um increase or apply wage increases to every single year. We found in the past that that approach ends up with us paying far above market um for what we need to um for this um type of job seeker traditionally and for the other employers that we compete with. That being said, our current part-time, temporary and seasonal pay plan has been static for three years now as we come to the end of twenty fourteen, so I do think it's time to take a look at that and look at increases to that pay plan. And a portion of that is driven by a state mandated increase in the minimum wage. Um, so we are a large employer by the state's definition. So we have moved from last month, the minimum wage was seven twenty-five, it is now eight dollars an hour. We had one position on our pay plan that needed to be tweaked in order to come into compliance with that and you took action on that in late May as we were moving into the summer season. Um, you can see that we are facing a one dollar increase on August first, twenty fifteen and then another fifty cent increase the following year. Um, it would be my strong recommendation that we adopt a twenty fifteen pay plan for part-time, temporary and seasonal employees that is in compliance with a nine dollar per hour minimum on January first. As I noted, we are at our peak of part-time and temporary employees come the first of August. This would be a major administrative hassle and difficulty in um in making that switch midway through the season. It also, I would expect, would put us at a significant disadvantage in April and May as we go to try to hire for the summer if we're still trying to hold on to rates under that nine dollars an hour.
Did state pass the minimum wage increase?
Yes. So, that is part.
Does that, does that apply to self-employed?
Like I said, these, one of the things, one of the.
Yeah, we're elected officials.
One of the things that this has done actually, in my view, appears to have complicated the situation because there's a large employer rate and a small employer rate. There's also a training rate and a youth rate and so what's the minimum wage that a particular employer needs to pay is dependent upon a variety of factors and it's not quite as clear-cut as maybe the headlines make it that, oh, the minimum wage went up August first, so. These are the numbers that we're looking at needing to accommodate when it comes to our part-time pay plan. Last uh group of employees is our paid-on-call firefighters. They are currently paid ten dollars and fifty cents an hour for their response to calls as well as their training and drill time. Um, that has been in place for several years as well now without being increased. Um, so we would like to take a look at that as we move towards the final budget for twenty fifteen.
Any recommendation?
I don't have an exact dollar amount recommendation ready for you yet, the chief and I need to do a little bit more work on this one.
I had a question on that, would uh, I'm not sure exactly how this works, so it might be a really stupid question, but no question is a stupid question if you don't know the answer. If we raise the hourly rate on the uh paid-on-call fire guys, is it possible to have a percentage of that increase go toward their, their pension payment?
No, they're separate decisions. Um, if we had a different pension form, there's a couple different forms of relief associations. So I believe if we had a different form under our relief association, you might be able to find some cities or fire departments in Minnesota that still have their structured that way. But we are, you know, a type A or whatever you wanna call it of the different types of relief associations and so ours are separate, we're gonna get into their pension issues in, in just a minute, but um, they are distinct. You certainly have the choice of where you put your funds, you know, in a given year and, and I would argue that as fewer people stay for the full twenty years and we need to recruit upfront, that we don't wanna put all of our eggs in the pension basket to the detriment of the hourly wage basket, that hourly wage is what you get every four weeks for your time spent and the number of evenings you jumped up and responded to a call and so on.
But it works backward too, if you don't put enough in there and then you find yourself with a bunch of people retiring and it's a big hit on the system that if it's not, so there, then you're trouble too, so.
Fortunately, we are not facing a big hit on the system in terms of our fire pension, at least in the, in the forecastable future. So, so that's where we're at on wages. Pension costs, pension costs and health insurance are by far our two largest benefit costs. Our employees fall into essentially three different pension groups. Two are with PERA, one covers police and fire. The other covers everybody else that makes more than four hundred and twenty-five dollars in a calendar month. So all of our full-time employees and some of our part-time employees as well are paying into that coordinated plan. And we have increases coming. So. In the coordinated fund, um, it's been a few years since we've had any change, so you can see twenty thirteen and the current year twenty fourteen are the same where the employer pays seven point two five percent um of the employee's wage into PERA and the employee pays six point two five percent. Under a state mandated law, those numbers are going to seven point five and six point five on January one. Should be noted that this is not unique to Shakopee, this fund covers city, county, township and non-educational employees of school districts across the state of Minnesota.
Who holds these funds?
The State Board of Investment invests them, if that's what you mean by holds them.
Okay.
So. Okay, so that's the coordinated fund, a quarter percent increase out of our pocket and a quarter percent increase out of our employees' pocket. The police and fire fund is headed into the second year of a two-year increase. So in twenty thirteen and for several years prior to that, the employer share was fourteen point four percent and the employee share was nine point six percent. January one of this year, they went up to fifteen point three and ten point two. And January one of next year, they'll go up to sixteen point two and ten point eight.
How come theirs are double at the other ones?
Excellent question, the reason for that is that our um police and firefighters, we've got about, I had a number on there, fifty-three employees that are in that fund. There's no social security paid by the employee or the employer um for people in that plan. So you can see our cost as an employer for our non-police and fire employees, our total cost to plan for their retirement and put aside for their retirement is fifteen point one five percent. So it is a little bit higher for police and fire, but it's not nearly as high as it looks on that first chart because it's offset by the fact that we don't pay into social security for them. You can see the similar cost down here, at the end of the day, non-police and fire, twenty-nine point three percent, police and fire, twenty-nine point nine when you add employer, employee, para, social security, when you kind of sum it all up together, so they're really not that different. The split of who's paying it for police and fire, the employer's bearing a little bit larger share of the burden is different and where it's going, for police and fire, it's all going into PERA whereas for non-police and fire, it's getting split between PERA and social security.
So is fi, is police not eligible for social security?
That is correct, when we hire a new employee into the police or fire fund um during their orientation, I explain this to them and they sign a statement that the earnings they are about to obtain from the city are not social security eligible.
But a paid-on-call fire guy that has a regular job, he has his social security through his regular job?
For a paid, this, but this isn't paid-on-call fire.
Okay.
This is full-time fire, so we have six fire chiefs, fire marshal and the forward duty crew and then our forty-seven sworn in the police department. So it's not the community service officer or the other civilian employees in the police department aren't in here.
Okay.
Licensed positions only. Alrighty. Going back to my chart showing kind of our progress over the years, so we are facing an increase in pension costs for the coordinated fund, for the police and fire fund and our last pension obligation is for the Fire Relief Association and you as a city council adopted this increase last year. You said yes to a one hundred dollar increase each year of three years, so our first increase was January one of this year, January one of next year and January one of twenty sixteen. It should be noted that whereas these numbers up here are contribution amounts, immediate out of the cities, every two weeks we're sending checks to para. These are benefit amounts. This is, so somebody that's a twenty-year employee, a paid-on-call firefighter for the Shakopee Fire Department that retires in twenty fifteen is gonna get seven thousand seven hundred dollars times twenty years. If they're a twenty-one-year employee, they get seventy-seven hundred times twenty-one years, et cetera. That's the benefit they get, it comes out of our relief association funds. That doesn't mean we have to put that money in every year, if our investments are performing well, the amount of actual money that the city has to contribute goes down. And I believe the chief told me that for twenty fifteen, we have no obligation. The actuarial look at our pension says it's where it needs to be, we're meeting our obligations and we aren't gonna have to put cash into the relief association.
Right, well, the fund is fully funded, has been just this year. As you recall, the amounts you can put in as a city based on your requirement vary from as high as three hundred and some thousand to as low as what this year could be at zero. One of the things we're discussing is, do we place a amount in the twenty fifteen budget as a placeholder? So you don't have these wild swings. Just another thought, we're, we're looking at this, talking to the Office of the State Auditor, what is okay, what isn't okay. But from a financial standpoint, between investment earnings and the status of the funding, there is no pension obligation for twenty fifteen.
Yay.
And just to give you the complete picture, for our paid-on-call firefighters, they're getting an employer contribution via that Fire Relief Association, their Fire Relief pension is entirely funded by the employer and investment earnings. They are not paying into social security, nor are we on their paid-on-call wages. They are required by law, something called OBR, um, to put seven and a half percent of their paycheck into a deferred comp plan at a fixed asset. So, that's the picture for them.
Who holds that?
We use Nationwide Retirement Services for the deferred comp for our firefighters. So. That is the pension picture, are there any questions on that? Like I said, that one is largely state mandated and it's, we're in the same boat as every other city and county in the state of Minnesota. Um, not a lot of policy decisions for the council to make there. And my last side of the evening is about insurance costs. Um, the city um provides medical, dental, life and long-term disability insurance for our benefits-eligible employees, which are those working um thirty hours a week or more on a consistent basis. By far, the giant in this pool is the medical. It, the cost and the dollar amount we set aside for medical um is in the neighborhood of one point two million dollars a year is what's coming from the city and our employees are putting in, I don't have the exact number, but certainly a comparable um amount. Maybe a little bit, we're probably not fifty-fifty, but. Um, medical, coming into twenty fourteen, we were blessed with a zero percent increase in our health insurance premiums from twenty thirteen. I'm not feeling so bold as to predict that that's going to happen again, I wish. Um, but I have seen about nine or ten months of our insurance experience of what will go into the twelve-month picture. It's looking pretty good, so the finance director and I have looked at it and tossed some things around. Right now, we're using an eight percent increase as our amount to hold in the preliminary budget. Um, I am optimistic that we will come in lower than that. I will know right around the first of October, um, is when I'll know on that. Dental life and LTD generally truck along at like a somewhere between zero and two percent and they're such small dollar amounts anyway that, that we generally don't spend a whole lot of time um on those.
Can you ballpark us one percent of uh medical insurance?
Like I said, our budget, if you look in the budget book for health insurance, it's about one point two um million dollars.
So if it's, comes in at nine percent, what's the difference in one percent? From a budgeting standpoint?
Okay, after, after a fifteen-hour day, I could come up with a number, but it wouldn't be accurate. Let me run that for you, Matt, and I'll be glad to send that out.
All right, because I, somehow I, I think it's gonna be higher than eight. I, I think a ten, but maybe it'll be less, you know, wishful thinking.
We can take it out of the downtown budget.
Well, I mean, if, if it's, if it's a small amount that can be absorbed, fine, if it's a big amount, then we might wanna be prepared for it. I don't know what the amount is though, she'll let us know.
That's what they do.
So, that's the personnel-related overview I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Any questions on any of those things?
I have one question and I know that you and I, you and Mark and I have talked about this in the past with the positions that we're adding, um, and have been adding for the last few years to catch up where we need to be as a city. I don't know how we do it, but at least I, and I think rest of council would like to know where this is all going with the overall picture, we've talked about the org chart and things like that and I know you have it kind of in your head and written down internally as to what it is. But how do we communicate that with everybody so that we know that this year we're doing this and what are we gonna do next year and where's kind of the light at the end of the tunnel? How does this all fit the bigger picture?
Um, I guess I'd have two pieces of feedback for that. One is, you've already proved that to some extent, in your feasibility study for City Hall, you agreed to a sub-study to be done by Springstead that's going to help us with kind of a mini organizational study. And one of the things they'll look at is our staffing levels compared to our workload and our population size and the scope of services that we provide. And so I think that might provide a good preliminary look at where a city of our size and our position, you know, might use as a benchmark for number of building inspectors, number of planners, number of IT staff, et cetera. Um. So that's part of the picture, um, and in. Um, and in talking to the consultant that's going to be doing that, we're getting, um, a high-level look at that. If you get that, which will, you will receive by the end of the year, um, and you want even more, they certainly do more in-depth studies than the one that we have contracted for, so we can go back and put a little more money on the table and have them dig deeper into that. Um, so that's one. Um, and you're right, staff does talk about this. Um, I probably need to rethink after tonight, but I was prepared to tell you that the IT request was the first of probably, um, a request a year for three years. You know, I have mapped out a five-person IT staff and what I see them as doing, and I could keep them busy tomorrow if I had them. I know it's not realistic to go from a two-person to a five-person in one budget year, you know, so, um, the request you saw tonight was intended to be phase one, you know, of a bigger-picture look at our IT department.
Do you need more than one right now?
Oh, yeah.
Like I said, we could keep them busy. One of the things we are honestly going to run up against, you'd authorized a retirement incentive that, um, the people that want to opt into that have until next Friday to do so. I think we are going to see some people opt into that. Those people will have to be hired. We'll have to analyze those positions, look at what form we might want to fill them in. Do we fill them as they exist now or in some other different form? Any number of these positions that you have up on the board that might get included in next year's budget. There's only so many people we have the capacity in HR to bring on in a given year, so if we can add one in twenty fifteen with, um, some kind of buy-in to a broader plan, I would consider that a success and, uh, step in the right direction. Like I said, though, I could keep a total of five people busy tomorrow if I could find them, hire them, bring them on board, and help them understand our lay of the land.
I could too, if I could pay for them.
We, we've also had the conversation about, we are, you know, even a hundred and thirty-some full-time employees. A lot of positions, we have just one individual who has that area of expertise. We don't have backup for that. If that person should get hit by the beer truck or whatever, you know, we would have problems in that particular area. Um, so we need to talk about how we provide for, uh, that as we move forward. We're also going to be looking at, um, what additional, or what changes we're going to make in terms of what we provide. I think the Metropolitan Council, its housing policy plan has, uh, tipped its hand that it thinks that housing inspection is something that cities should be doing. We haven't done that. Is that something that, uh, we're going to work into? Well, it's probably got, not going to be a two thousand and fifteen discussion, but two thousand and sixteen, that's probably going to be something that we have to talk about. So, you know, some of those things will, uh, correspond with what building inspection does or what planning does or those sorts of things, but those, as we look farther down the line, we're going to continue to do what we do. We're going to look at what we may not need to do, going back to the earlier conversation we had tonight. And then there are going to be some systems changes that we're going to have to look at. So all those, I think, with the Springstead study coming in, will help us, uh, coalesce around what maybe is a good, going to be a good recommendation to you that'll be coming in the next few months and early next year.
Good. And with regard to IT department, if you can use five, I would encourage you to put, if you could handle growing by two this year, I would recommend, encourage, in the preliminary budget, growing by two, because the more we put, in my opinion, the more we put into IT, the more efficient and the better off everybody else will be, and make the entire system work a lot better and not run into lag issues. So if we could use five and we can add two, I'm very much in favor of doing that.
The city administrator and I met with a consultant from Springstead that's going to be doing our study last week, and he made the comment that a good IT director pays for him or herself in efficiencies throughout the city, so. In the time we have between your preliminary budget and your final budget, we will certainly go back and, um, reexamine that issue as well as the issues you raised earlier.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Lehman?
Two thousand and four to two thousand and eight, we used to get a sheet that would show the number of employees to population. Total number of city employees to the total population. And it was a good gauge from year to year to see as your populations increase, your employee base is increasing. And, uh, I haven't seen one of them in a while. The police department does it on pretty much a regular basis where it's the one point three-five per thousand standard used nationwide, which is, uh, you know, a, a, what am I thinking of? A, uh, ratio of-
Benchmark?
A ratio of-
Yeah.
Industry standard.
Right, of people to population.
We can certainly provide you with that information, Councilmember Lehman. Uh, when we do, I would argue that it's a more relevant measure in certain departments and functions than in others. Some of our staffing is purely a policy decision of what the council wants to focus on, a natural resources position, an economic development position. Some of those needs are driven by policy priorities rather than by pure population growth, but other departments that, that seems to line up as, as a pretty, um, sustainable measure.
And we did get that last year. We got that, um, in FTEs, uh, compared to two thousand and eight, we are significantly lower per capita than we were in two thousand and eight. Um.
And then the last thing I had, the question was the, uh, Met Council's, uh, housing inspection push. What does that entail?
At this point, um, I think there's, uh, some indication on their part that, uh, cities should be looking at quality of life sorts of things beyond just, you know, the, uh, structural safety, uh, sorts of things. So we don't know exactly what that means other than the fact that they've indicated that cities should probably be doing housing inspection for cleanliness and health issues and those sorts of things beyond what we typically do as building inspectors, looking to make sure that the roof trusses are correct.
So, uh, should I contact the Met Council and tell them quality of life is how much of my own money I earned that you let me keep would really substantially help my quality of life?
Yes.
Certainly welcome to do that, yes.
And that my private property is my private property, and then get the hell off?
All right. Well, item number eleven, other business. Uh, any other business that we need to discuss? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn to September second, twenty fourteen at seven PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at, to September second, twenty fourteen at seven PM.
Do we have a second?
Sir.
Senator Councilwoman Lehman, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.